The Sleen City Planning Commission will come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the recording secretary please call the roll?
Young.
Here.
Carroll.
Here.
Postick.
Here.
Marl. Absent. Gierba.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Beardsley. Absent. Heft. Absent. Troyka. Absent.
Staff present tonight are City Planner Arvok, Community Development Director Harrington, and Recording Secretary Katnick. I would like to amend the agenda to allow for developer comments under hearing, public hearing 23-17.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 12th, 2023 as amended or submitted?
Who has submitted? Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Public comment: Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comments. The person is requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Onto the public hearings. Number 23-16, zoning amendment creating ordinance number 857, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance for Appendix A, Article II, and 12 to define further clarity, clarify, define and further clarify certain parameters and procedures for the regulation of signs. We have a memo dated April 20th, 2023 from Community Development Director Harrington.
Absolutely. I'm going to step up here tonight because I have my mouse plugged in, so hopefully we can make this a little bit more streamlined. Location work? All right, so as with all of our other ordinances, ordinance 857 is a citywide change. Importantly, none of our sign standards have changed for residential properties, not residentially zoned properties, but residential properties, including temporary signs. The proposed changes primarily affect commercial businesses, but also affect public quasi-public users. Like other ordinances, the regulation does not usurp private deed agreements or leases. If a commercial condo, for example, has certain sign restrictions that are more stringent than ours, our sign restrictions do not take their place. Same thing with temporary signs, same thing with HOAs as it relates to residential signs. So for some of the background, the planning commission, you all approved and adopted or recommended approval and adoption, which the city council ultimately did, of a sign code in summer of 2022. The goal was to bring us into compliance with local or federal court cases, as the previous sign code was heavily content-based. Staff discovered several problems with the temporary sign section, and some known signage problems within our own community remain unresolved with that update. The code review suggested a few minor modifications to the ordinance, which are reflected in the formal ordinance document before you all today. This was at their meeting last Wednesday. So some of the important updates. First and foremost, the update condenses definitions and removes problematic language related to the content of signs. Last summer's adoption began this process as well of removing content. I have a piece crossed out that was in my memo. So currently, we have a provision for community event signs, the process of studying for the AICP test. I found out that that specific carve-out would not be allowed, so we're going to have to at least make some modifications to this ordinance. So we're not recommending that you move forward with it tonight, but more just getting preliminary feedback from the planning commission, and this ordinance will likely be brought back. The proposed code will also ban vehicular signs. Window signs and blue signs are now permitted without a permit. Previously, they were considered temporary signs. We're still holding the same 25% covering requirement for window signs, so this is stickers or things affixed to the inside of the window for additional signage. There was some conversation at code review about signs being leaned up against the window. It's really hard to regulate internal building signage as a means of outdoor signage. Once again, we're all talking about First Amendment speech issues here, so I'll be working with our attorney to figure out what provisions we can install as signage pushed up against the window, even if it's not directly affixed to it. The size of monument signs for shopping centers and multi-tenant facilities is now firmly capped at 150 square feet and 10 feet in height. There used to be a provision to increase the size to 200 square feet if the sign was under the allowed 20 square feet, 20 feet in height. So currently, we have 20 feet in height, but if you scaled that back, you could have up to 200 square feet in size. So upon further staff investigation following up from code review, it's a pretty fast turnaround from last Wednesday. There are likely several signs that are about 15 feet in height, so then maybe this is an area that we, we increase the height or leave the size the same, so we have some options there. And the goal would then be to not create an ordinance that would make a bunch of these multi-tenant center shopping signs non-conforming as well. You don't want to change people's expectations after their purchase, essentially. Ground signs will be allowed 10 feet from the right-of-way as opposed to 15, as it has been in the past. This has been one of the most complained about items from sign contractors, the reduction in height and then the cap at an area, so 150 feet firmly was the trade-off I was attempting to make here. There's a requirement that they would still have to meet the city's clear vision standards, which is a vision triangle established 20 feet from the right-of-way. Cool, there we go. It codifies the city's historic application of allowing building signs for public quasi-public facilities. In this instance, we can think of maybe the church, churches, or the legion, or other groups that are nonprofits. So historically, the city has allowed them to have signs affixed to their building under our professional business district standards, which are more stringent than our other commercial district standards. Per code review's recommendation, we added a line that no internal illumination of such signs, given their proximity and usual location in residential districts, should be allowed. This is assuming that they're in residential districts, I'll add. If they're not, they would have the same provisions as any other business in a commercial or an industrial district. Additionally, last year's adoption altered the rules of campaign signs. There was no direction or clarity in the code for how non-residential properties were allowed to express political speech beyond the guidelines in the temporary sign section, at which the staff was advised was insufficient by our legal counsel. So similar to other communities, the proposed code allows an expansion of signage in the campaign season for the total square footage allowed of temporary signs at a time. But importantly, the properties will be allowed to add additional signs, but not bigger signs, which often comes up as a matter of fairness in campaign season, who has the biggest signs. It's definitely a point of controversy at city council meetings last year. So there's a provision in this current city code that would require contractors, specifically signed contractors, to specially register with us, similar to how we register food trucks, daycare facilities, massage establishments. It's an additional registration beyond the state's purview. From my understanding, the city has never enforced that since its inception. We've never specially registered signed contractors. I'm only aware of three cities that do that, Detroit and Grand Rapids being two of them. So the state has other means to register signed specialists, as Danica can attest to. We definitely register all of our contractors, and that's a wholly separate process than the one that was being discussed in this ordinance. But since we're not enforcing it, and we've never enforced it, makes sense to remove So for temporary signs, Sleen has historically permitted temporary signs in different shapes, sizes, and location based on the content of the sign. That's a big First Amendment no-no according to the Supreme Court, and thus, it needs to be changed because it leaves us open to legal, legal action being taken. So the sign code adopted last summer is specifically problematic because it did remove all the regulations surrounding content, but it didn't then create a uniform regulation in its place. So instead, if you look at the sign code that was in front of you and attached to the packet, there are multiple different standards for temporary signs and no clear direction of how we should be enforcing those. So as a sol, as a result, we currently have a sign code that effectively contradicts itself on the amount of temporary signage available. There's not even necessarily structural requirements attached to those. So these are a new residential, non-residential temporary sign section. The residential ones have remained identical to what they were before. The only difference for residential is rigid and wireframe that's not shown in this slide. But the new code would allow one temporary sign, which is in line with how Dexter has been handling temporary signs, and it's subject to the height and area requirements below. Signs can be placed up for 30 to, excuse me, for up to 30 consecutive days, and the property owner must wait 30 days before replacing it, before replacing it with another sign. And the non-residential users in residential districts will conform to the PB, the Professional Business District, similar to how we're handling those building signs. So either talking about, in this case, commercial businesses or the public quasi-public users. This brings us into another issue with the ordinance, proposed ordinance before you. We've historically permitted temporary signs for community events, for whether that's a musical being held at the, the school, whether that's a show being held at Fifth Corner, something that the Main Street organization is doing. We've historically permitted them separately from other temporary signs. And historically speaking, the Supreme Court has acknowledged the difference between commercial speech and non-commercial speech, higher speech and lower speech. But in their latest ruling, that was not how they felt about the issue. So if you have to read the, the content of the temporary sign, whether it was permitted or not, it's considered a violation of the First Amendment. It seems like there is some wiggle room that Mike was talking to me about prior to this meeting, where we could potentially regulate the use of the property as opposed to it. It doesn't really apply in this case. We're talking about off-site community event signs. So we're talking about something that is inherently content-based. So we're going to have to reevaluate how we best do that, and if you have any suggestions on what your thoughts on temporary signage are, that would be fantastic. So that will definitely be something we need to amend prior to recommending adoption of this ordinance. Thankfully, that takes us into the considerations for all of you. One of the most important things here is should electronic message boards be allowed in residential districts? So that was one of the big things that's not on this, but is in the packet. We are currently allowing, in theory, resident, electronic message boards in residential districts for public quasi-public users as we previously defined. So churches, schools, or uses of a nonprofit nature. It currently contradicts itself in our code because we're saying it can't show or shine at a residentially zoned parcel. And pretty much all the church communities, all of the public quasi-public community, users in our community are facing other residentially zoned parcels. So I have it written to inherently contradict itself so that we can have some sort of conversation on what is the planning commission's prerogative for that, what is the city council's policy direction on that. So we're awaiting feedback on it because one of the items the code review suggested was prohibiting images and only allowing text to be shown on the message boards, which may provide us a little bit more leeway and may make some more community members comfortable with the idea of electronic message boards being in their neighborhood. Additionally, what should the maximum allowed number, size, and height be for temporary signs is a question we're looking for feedback on. Code review asked to strike a per side provision in the code. So originally, that 32 square feet was per side of sign, but now we've reduced it to 32 feet, square feet total. So you could have a 16-square-foot sign with two sides visible, or one 32-square-foot size, sign with the banner, the backside of that banner being blank. Additionally, is the duration proposed for temporary signs, up to 30 days on and then 30 days off, acceptable? Originally, it was 30 days on and then 60 days off, but code review recommended being more relaxed on that provision. And then lastly, looking through both the memo and the sign code, what other thoughts or concerns do you have? And so with that, I'll get back to you.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Community Development Director Harrington? Do we want to acknowledge the receipt?
I have some questions.
Yes.
Regarding the electronic signs. On 6C, it says the electronic sign cannot exceed 50% of the total.
Yeah, so electronic message boards are in the ground sign category, so it can't exceed 50% of more of the size of the ground sign. So usually, electronic message boards are encapsulated by some sort of masonry or, or other monument essentially that, that encases them. So they can't be more than 50% the size of the monument, essentially.
I guess being really terribly restrictive, most, most masonry is just maybe a brick on the bottom and top and then side, so the sign portion is typically 80%.
Right, so I would say that's how our commercial code is handled right now. This is how it's handled with or without, you know, public quasi-public, but we could definitely look into the, that, that size requirement if you'd like.
Because in most digital signs, I've seen that, you know, the whole sign is digital. You just buy the sign and it goes right to the frame. So 50% just, it's not even close.
Right, like I said, that was the previous, that's how the city has previously permitted these signs, so I didn't change that provision of it. I just, I changed the display time for the public quasi-public to being 120 seconds.
I just want to, I remember the code review, so we adjusted some of those. The one example of where 30 days, it was 30 days and 60 days off, that was the idea that that might be too much. Not long as we put the sign up for 60 days, it could be too much. So we discussed and debated that back and forth. The real issue is not having somebody have to sign up for an entire year. Try to have at least some kind of appropriate thing. The recommendation was 60 days, that may be something plenty must discuss if they feel that that's, 30 days is too short, isn't it too much? And then the other one, concerning with the size of the signs is like, when you talk 32 square feet, that's a sheet of plywood. That's a big sign. And that's still maybe a questionable size if you don't consider that because, you know, if it's 16, that's not so bad. 32, you'd shoot plywood. But again, that's only in the commercial area, correct? These sizes that you're recommending?
Those sizes for temporary signs, or are we talking about electronic message boards?
Temporary.
Yes, so I can go back. Yes, these would only apply to commercial properties.
Okay.
Because the residential ones are different. Also, Mr. Carroll, I can clarify too. So it's not 50%, it's 50% of the allowed grind, ground size area. So we allow 150 square foot ground sign essentially. So 70, you're allowed a 75 square foot electronic message board. Now, you can't extend it to the whole 150. So whether or not it's 50% of the total sign on your property is a different question. So it's not just, just the monument that's being built, but only 50% of that allotted amount for ground signs can be the electronic message board. And if you choose to cover it entirely with masonry or not is, is your own prerogative.
So it'll, it's, so then the electronic sign area is 75 square feet?
Yes, I believe so. I can double-check on that specific. It depends on the district because ground signs vary by zoning classification.
Well, for the residential?
Right, it's going to be under the professional business. If you just give me a second, I have to pull up that exact ordinance language. So in a residential district, it would be 18 square feet actually, because that's more restrictive. So you have an 18-square-foot electronic message board in that instance.
Wow. Okay, this is really small. Then as we're talking about, you know, keeping luminosity concerns across from residential for public quasi, what do we do in terms of commercial? I can think of areas where we allow, you know, commercials developed and they put signs up and they're bright. Do we have any restriction in that situation, or is that?
So it's half a foot candle at the property line, which is a measure of luminosity. I can't tell you exactly what that looks like off the top of my head, but it's half a foot candle at the property line for commercial. It's .1 foot candles for residential properties. So there is a restriction still on the luminosity of the sign, even if it's only facing commercial properties.
So we'd be making the public quasi the same as the commercial?
It would follow the resident, so even, so if a commercial property, it butts a residential property at the moment. It has to be .1 foot candles at that property line. On the other side, if it's a commercial business, it has to be .5.
Okay.
So that differentiation would stay for the, the public quasi.
Because then you know that public quasi concerns that came up with the code review was the idea that being that most of those churches and most of the buildings are within a total residential area.
Right.
Is really limiting the brightness of whatever that sign is. We haven't even talked about potential reducing the light of the sign during the after-hours or something like that.
Absolutely.
Most of the perf, newer signs now do have automatic illumination where it, it goes down at night, so it is not as bright.
Right. I mean, we could make that more specific that that does have to occur because I don't know, some of the signs may, may or may not, just depending on your.
Right, I, I think the goal of the electronic message board specifically for this too is just to get a, a good sense. I mean, I, I say I know your opinion, Mr. Carroll, but I, I don't know what the city council or the rest of the planning commission has, and I've gotten varying feedback. So it was more of a, if we're definitively doing this, then I need to know that so then we can then flesh out the regulation a little bit more.
Because one of the, and I will say, one of the concerns on it was, you know, allowing it to run text and such, but you could potentially put up videos, inappropriate type pictures, that kind of thing. So you start wondering, what is the intent of the sign? And then you get into contact concerns, and we're not sure when you do, it makes it so much easier with electronics, I mean, just changing this thing. So those are things that this group and city council need to consider.
Absolutely. Animated signs are prohibited, so you cannot broadcast a, a video that moves essentially, and it couldn't emit noise either, so.
Yeah, I mean, there's a restriction as to, can't be changed more than once every two minutes.
Right. But it, but it gets into the point of what is being displayed on there, and it's like, those could be changed. You could change, in theory, you could change a picture every two minutes. And that was one of the discussion points where the code review was concerned about what does that electronic sign allow, which normally we see with a regular manual-type sign, those types.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion on the table to acknowledge the receipt of the memo dated April 20th from?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Move to open the public hearing, support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Public comment period is open. All public comments to be heard, limit of three minutes per person.
Seeing there is no one moving up, I am moved to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Any additional comments, questions from the planning commission members from the four items that were originally on that?
My question I have is, Ben, do you feel that we provided a number review by the planning commission considering half the boards gone?
Well, and this will definitely have to come back for you. So I was going to recommend that we, given the fact that several of you are gone and the primary interest in bringing this to you was to get more feedback prior to taking it to council, I would recommend that we postpone at least for a month so that I can get legal clarification on some of these outstanding issues.
Excellent. I will make that motion to postpone to?
May 24th would be, it might be safer to be honest with you, given our attorneys propensity to respond, to do it, June 14th actually, would be my preference.
Change it, move it to a date certain of June 14th, 2023?
Second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This will be postponed to a date certain of June 14th.
Yeah, if you want to move to the next one, that'd be awesome, Ben.
Public hearing number 23-17, application from Danny Berry of Livonia Builders for preliminary PUD plan and rezone for Bison Ridge from R3 to PUD to develop 3.11 acres and construct 20 single-family units at 207 Monroe Street, Celine, Michigan, 48176, parcel number 18-18-01-170-015. In our packet, we have a report dated April 21st from City Planner Auerbach, a report dated April 18th, 2023 from OHM Advisors, and a memo dated April 21st, 2023 from Community Development Director Harrington.
Right, thank you. So it's 207 Monroe. The PUD is titled Bison Ridge. It is action item 2317 for a preliminary PUD and rezone for Livonia Builders. I attached the general site concept on the front slide. So the current property is downtown adjacent. It's on the east side of Monroe Street and directly adjacent to the cemetery in our community as well as People's Park. It was last zoned R3A and then noted as multifamily in our master plan. It was previously supposed to be developed into the Wesley, a multifamily community. Ultimately, that development, as everyone in this room is aware, did not happen and fell through. There were some site work conducted as a result of that project, but a developer ultimately walked away. The city took pitches from interested buyers and decided on Livonia Builders at a city council meeting earlier this year out of two qualified applicants. So the request is a preliminary PUD and rezone directly from our ordinance. The planning commission shall review the preliminary PUD according to the provisions of Sections 2.02 through 2.05 following the public hearing. The planning commission shall recommend to the city council either approval, denial, or approval conditions. In making its recommendation, the planning commission shall find that the proposed PUD meets the intent of the PUD district and the following four standards. One, in relation to the underlying zoning, the proposed type and density of use shall not result in a material increase in the need for public services, facilities, utilities, and shall not place a material burden upon the subject or surrounding land or property owners or occupants or the natural environment. The proposed development shall be compatible with the city master plan and shall be consistent with the intent and the spirit of this article. Three, the PUD shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. Four, the proposed PUD shall be under single ownership or control such that there is a single person or entity having responsibility for completing the project in conformity with this ordinance. This provision shall not prohibit a transfer of ownership or control upon due notice to the zoning administrator. So to hop in, PUDs are interesting. We're looking at density. We're looking at the underlying zoning district, and then we're also opening up the whole can of worms that comes with a regular site plan. So here is that proposed PUD density. I apologize for the audience if it's not displaying property on that screen. So the underlying zoning of the property is currently R3A, so it follows the R2 standards for single-family, which require a minimum lot size of 9,800 square feet or 4.4 units per acre. It would then require for the proposal 4.5 acres, but according to our master plan, which is zoned for multi, designated as multifamily, it's 10 to 15 units per acre. So this project does meet that requirement in terms of its residential density. So I also have the proposed lot standards with its subsequent deviations. So in theory, if they're following the R2 guide for a single-family, they would have to be at 9,800 square feet as opposed to the proposed 3,500. The lot width would have to be 60 as opposed to the proposed 35. And then you can see the delineation and the setbacks, 25 feet being the one that's remained, but the side standards have a five-foot deviation, and the total has a nine-foot deviation. And then the rear setback goes from 50 feet to 35 feet, and the lot coverage is 10% higher than allowed. We don't have any items on the building height yet. We're waiting elevations as we'll discussion in a minute here. Just as a note, the required is based on the single-family in the R3A district. The applicant could in theory choose to build a PUD off the R1C standards, and the deviations would appear less as a result. So we're not necessarily concerned by the size of the deviations because we have other single-family residential districts that are perhaps more close in alignment. There would still be deviations necessary, absolutely, but it's not as grand as it seems. So it is similar to every other site plan review you've done. We have to go through this list of criteria, area width, height, and setbacks, natural resources impacted, the building location, parking and loading, site access and circulation, safety paths, landscaping, lighting, signs, floor plan, and elevation. And especially for PUDs, we like to involve our engineering considerations sooner rather than later to give the applicant an account, an open and transparent look of what we're going to be expecting come the final PUD. So in the staff review, there were a number of areas that needed further clarity. So area width, height, and setbacks, we'll need scaled elevation. On the PUD itself, it shows R3, which is a discrepancy going back to our 2017 zoning map. The underlying zoning is actually the R3A. We would ask that the applicant consider shifting the proposed dwellings to accommodate sidewalks and the required parking necessary, so that one space in the driveway, as well as evaluate the potential of how attached decks would be permitted. Additionally, for parking and loading, removing the driveway parking space right-of-way encroachment for site access and circulation, providing tearing templates for waste collection and fire trucks. For safety paths, providing sidewalks along the frontage of all the proposed dwellings and both sides of Yellowstone Access Drive, or at least demonstrating why that's not possible in this case. I know there are site considerations here too. For landscaping, to determine whether a pathway to People's Park is a requirement per our own PUD standards. And then additionally, providing an open space calculation, whether or not, for the planning commission's consideration, 100-foot greenbelt is going to be required. And then whether existing vegetation is sufficient for screening. And then lastly, an inventory of existing vegetation. So these items already exist. We're cognizant of that. We're informing Mr. Livonia, the Livonia Builders of this as well. For lighting, they must submit a lighting plan. And then for floor plan and elevation, we need to provide a proposed building material palette and then more detailed scaled elevations per that first point there. These were the elevations that we were originally provided for Mr. Berry, so these were not part of that original submittal. We received them after the fact, but just to give you an idea of what these proposed homes are going to look like. So there's the three there with the three different layouts. So at this time, it's my recommendation that the planning commission postpone action on the preliminary PUD and rezoning of the sites so the applicant can sufficiently demonstrate and respond to the following. First, provide a PUD narrative and supplemental data as required by Section 10.06. Two, to provide scaled elevation that specify the proposed building heights and stories. Three, correct the current zoning designations shown on the site plan. Four, remove the driveway parking space right-of-way encroachment. Five, provide a turning template to demonstrate that the roadway dimensions are adequate for emergency access and refuse collection. Six, provide an updated plan that identifies the areas devoted to open space. Seven, provide an inventory and assessment of the existing vegetation and identify trees that will be removed or preserved. Eight, provide an updated site plan that shows the location of exterior lighting. And then nine, provide a proposed building material palette. Prelimarily, it does appear that the applicant is conforming generally to Section 10.02C and Section 10.06D of the PUD ordinance, which is ultimately what the planning commission is asking, being asked to decide on, as well as a recommendation on to the city council. However, at this time, the staff will not make a formal recommendation on whether we feel that plan meets, is compliant or lack thereof until the nine concerns have been addressed. And then in addition, and kind of the purpose for having this meeting is to get these six questions out of the way. So items that the planning commission should ask the applicant to address, as well as any that you might have on your own, is the applicant should evaluate whether attached decks could be permitted. Two, to request that the applicant provide sidewalks along the frontage of all the proposed dwellings and both sides of Yellowstone Court Access Drive or demonstrate why that's not feasible. Three, consider shifting the proposed dwelling locations to accommodate sidewalks and the required parking spaces. Four, whether the applicant should provide a pedestrian connection to People's Park in keeping with Section 10.05A. Five, whether the applicant needs to fulfill the required 100-foot greenbelt around the perimeter of the site or if that can be waived. And then six, whether the existing vegetation along the site's north and east boundaries provide an adequate screen, and if screening must be provided along the southern lotline.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Harrington?
How do you want us to proceed at this point tonight? It sounds like the city's not recommending. Do we still hold a public hearing and then postpone?
I would still hold the public hearing. If it's in the planning commission and the city council's interest or staff's interest, we could always renotice. Again, we could redirect notice even if we don't formally publish a public hearing notice again. So we have a variety of options for proceeding. I would still hold the public hearing, and I would address these six questions with the applicant because the sooner that they can get the ball rolling on those six questions and other comments or considerations you might like them to take into consideration, the sooner that they can provide a final PUD to us down the road.
And to clarify, all properties surrounding this, within the required footage, have been notified or sent?
That's correct.
So flicking that, just a quick point, I think it'd be beneficial, or what could be helpful for the applicant is to provide some direction on some of the specifics in our review and that Mr. Harrington mentioned, whether or not you have opinions one way or the other about that, whether that additional interior sidewalk should be provided. Interior pedestrian circulation and connections to existing adjacent pedestrian paths are mentioned a number of times in the PUD standard, but you could either discuss that more specifically with the applicant if you feel that, you know, some of the additions are, that it may make sense not to add sidewalks in certain places, while we would certainly advocate for it given this particular location adjacent, its proximity to downtown and People's Park. There could be reasons to, that it may not be feasible throughout the site. You could also provide feedback on, or your thoughts, impressions about whether that a pedestrian connection to People's Park specifically should be provided, where that may go. And I know there's some history with that being discussed and where a potential connection could go. Similarly, with the parking and the need to potentially adjust the, how the buildings are sited, again, to accommodate potential sidewalk, also to make sure, yeah, that vehicles wouldn't encroach. Another item I believe was mentioned is, and that you could ask the applicants whether or not there'll be any on-street parking. It's not clear in the plan. I believe that there may not be room for that. So that's another overall site design item to consider and ask them about.
And then I would just also add the greenbelt consideration. So if it was a different use, we're calling this a more intense or fundamentally different use than the surrounding adjacent neighborhood, they would technically have to provide that 100-foot greenbelt. So I don't think it's staff's recommendation that you require them to do that, but ultimately, it's not our decision to make. So I would say that it's a relatively similar intensity of use and similar type of use in terms of residential. So that's just that greenbelt consideration.
Can I suggest to Chair, can we address each one of these individually with the, at this point, would we do it now at this point with comments by the?
I would hold up, I would open and close the public hearing prior to.
Okay.
So we'll hold off on, but we shouldn't acknowledge the receipt of the memo?
Correct.
But should we give the applicant a chance to speak as we modify the agenda to allow for that?
Oh, I guess I didn't know where that falls. My understanding is that it was?
It usually falls before the public hearing.
Then let's do that.
Okay, perfect. And then we can address each one of these specifically if it's not addressed during that 10-minute period, if that's okay? Okay, great. Acknowledge the receipt of the memo dated April 21st, April 18th, and April 21st.
I'll make that a motion, support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Developer comments are limited to 10 minutes. Would the developer like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Danny Berry. I'm the owner of Livonia Builders. We are extremely excited about this project. Traditionally, to get more affordable housing, it becomes some type of a multifamily product, either a condo or an apartment. And we came up with a way to create a more affordable product. It does have the one-car garage. It's a little smaller than what you're traditionally seeing on a house. It's between 1,300 and 1,600 feet, but it will help us with the lot size to be able to bring our product in at a, under $300,000 price point. So that's what we're really excited about. We feel the demand is huge for that price point in not only this community, but darn near every community around. As far as the items on the list, we have already made the changes to almost everything on there. We've increased the driveway lengths. The only one, there's a couple that I wanted to address with you guys before we make the final, final changes. The one was the 100-foot greenbelt that Ben had mentioned. Obviously, it would be really difficult to develop this site if we had to take 100-foot perimeter all the way around it. And being that it butts up to the same use on both sides, and there is a pretty good distance between, especially with the topography, between the units that do back up to the homes around it. As far as the sidewalk on both sides, the reason why we did it on one side, well, two reasons, but the main thing is we tried to keep the impervious surface to a minimum. We did want to have sidewalks through the community, but so we did eliminate the one side. We also felt with the size of the community that it was okay with it only being on the one side. We're not hell-bent on it. If you guys absolutely want the sidewalk on the other side, we will do it, but those were the reasons why we didn't do that. The connection point to People's Park, the biggest problem with that is the topography of the site. You're not looking at the engineering, but if you look at the edge of the road to the property line that's adjacent to People's Park, it's a six-foot drop in maybe 18 feet. And then once you hit the property line, it's another five-foot drop in 15 feet. So it's a really severe incline at that point, and that really is the only logical point to make that connection back. So we didn't include that figuring, again, based on the size of the site, that the connection from Monroe Street would be adequate enough to do that. The other comment too that I wanted to address on the decks, I think currently your ordinance allows an eight-foot protrusion over the setback line. That really works for three of our four plans because we're not up to the setback line. Our houses are a little bit smaller, but there is one that's only two feet off of that setback line, which would then give a maximum size of a deck is 10 feet. So we did want to ask if that could be changed from eight feet to 10 feet so the largest home in there can at least get a 12-foot deck. So that was one of the other comments that was, that was addressed in there. We will have all the elevations for the next meeting. You did see a couple of them right there. We will have the height requirement. They're just a traditional two-story home. It's not going to be anything that's 40 feet in the air. So that will address that issue. I think that, oh, the lighting. I don't know if you all know this, but I own Cascade Point, and we put all the garage lights on a photo eye. And I really personally would prefer to do it this way here versus having streetlights throughout the community. So every garage lights are on. They can't turn them off because they are on a photo eye, which means when it gets dark, they automatically turn on, and they're on all through the night until dusk. That's how I would prefer to do the site. There is a streetlight right at the entrance. So again, I'm going to leave that up to you guys, but that would be my preference to mirror what we have there because I really like the way that looks in the evening. It gives it a nice lighting of the entire street, or I should say, all the driveways, which eventually filter into the street, but it's not the big streetlight pole with just shining down on the 20-foot diameter around it. So those were the things that I want to discuss tonight. I'm anticipating we'll be back in a couple weeks with a complete package, the narrative, the elevations, and everything that's in this sheet. Like I said, all the engineering things we've already done. Like I said, all the engineering things we've already done, addressed. So that's all I have to say. If you have any questions for me?
Just to confirm, so each driveway will be able to hold two cars plus the garage?
The garage will have a car. The driveway itself will have a car. We are offering this second wide pad that will be adjacent to it. We're actually offering it at our cost so that it's not a big number burden for them. And we are, he had mentioned something about parking in the street. We will have parking on one side of the street.
So the wider driveway will be an option though?
Yeah, it'll be like $1,500 or something like that. Be a small number.
Yes, a couple of clarifications. This is going to be a private street?
Yes, I believe, yes, it will because if, otherwise it doesn't meet the city ordinance. I think this is 66 is your city ordinance for a public street, I believe. Yeah.
I just want to make sure because the, the desert court is a public street.
Correct, correct. We had a lot more room there.
And how you may take this, not that I see you're trying to name it, because this is a historic neighborhood, Oakwood and all that, if possibly using something that's more relevant to a location, Bison and Wyoming and Yellowstone?
Well, Yellowstone's not the road. It's just Wyoming.
Yeah, I wondered, I saw something where it's at Yellowstone.
Yeah, but for whatever reason, landscape architect put Yellowstone on there. I must have been watching the show or something.
I just recommend you may want to talk with either our historic society or with Mr. Harrington to possibly think of a more local type of naming of it. Bison and Wyoming seems out west versus?
Gotcha. I don't know anything about the historical significance of the site.
Yeah, Oakland Cemetery and this, actually this whole land butts a historical district and then the idea that would grow at some point will become a historic district too. So just have the naming kind of be more relevant of our city and our history.
Okay.
It's just a suggestion.
All right.
It'd be appreciated. As for the sidewalks, and I'm just, I'm going to make, I would suggest that the sidewalks be installed because we have pushed and have significant input where everybody wants sidewalks.
Okay.
In this situation where you're potentially cutting across driveways and we're currently parked, we don't know where that car could end.
Right.
You'd have to walk into the street, so that would be a consideration to be made.
Okay.
I appreciate the idea of the lighting. That sounds creative. Since it's going to be a private street, that would be a more lean to that, I believe, Mr. Harrington?
I believe so. There's not as many stringent light requirements, but I would have to ask the engineer about that.
I can give other opinions on it, but those were just my questions. If there's other questions, I'll refer to you.
Is, on the, the end of the short street in the end, I believe you called it Hammerhead?
Yep.
Is there access from that street to People's Park?
That's the part that I was talking about. If, if there was to be a direct access, that would be the only, or the most logical spot, but the topography is like, it is really steep from that. It's 11 feet drop from the edge of that road to where People's Park levels out in 20, in like 30 feet. So it's a really steep incline. I mean, anything can be done. That would be the most logical spot, but we didn't put it in because of that topography change. And then I don't believe there's anything on the People's Park side, once you cross the line, that would even, I can't remember. I think the parking lots, what, about five or maybe about 10 feet off of that?
Right. This might also be something we have to work with Engineer Humpherson, given the plant project also occurring right now. I know that there's kind of a bottleneck in the nor, the eastern end of that park. So I would be concerned about the, the pathway dropping right next to a large tower essentially.
But we, I mean, we can take a look at it, you know, but I know that that was what, when we saw the comments, my engineer and I pulled it out, looked at the topography and noticed how, how extreme it does go. It goes like this and levels and then it goes again. It drops real fast.
I mean, would the city be?
Those residents wanted to get to People's Park.
They're going to go up, yeah, along Monroe Street and then back in.
I like that idea the best too because you, you talk either steps, you talk a ramp, I mean, that's going to create all kinds of problems.
Plus they'll get more exercise.
I like the idea of coming out and just going.
Okay.
And is that, are those steps going to be ADA approved, you know? And you're looking at a ramp and then I just, you're just going to put trouble going down and those levels and going.
It's just, it's just natural for people to take the shortest route.
Well, and that will probably happen with the people capable of doing that.
Because if it's there, it has to be ADA compliant.
Yep.
I mean, I mean, would the city consider elevating a portion of the park so the ramp is a little more shallow?
I would have to ask Engineer Humpherson, by no means an expert on the cost of that grading project that it would be.
What we could do as a recommendation is that you could put something in here and defer it if in event that the city decides to add a truck, you know, add some kind of a trail or whatever to connect to it, then at that point in time it could be installed. If people are worried about that kind of connection, but at this point you could just put landscaping in there. Because I believe if I'm right, you're locating it in between the, your access would be across right there at the back? Right, yes?
It would probably, the sidewalk would probably run between, in front of units roughly 13 through 10 and then connect. Or could, because if we had the sidewalk in front of one through nine, because again, we've pushed it back, so you got the same distance, 20 feet from the driveway to the right away, or to the sidewalk, just like across the street. So we already pushed those back. So if the walk came there, I know the fire hydrants are on, you know, they run in between nine and 15. So I don't think we could put it on that side. It would have to go on the east side of the Hammerhead to get it to there.
My recommendation is we're all just not doing it. Because you're right, the second we put a, if we put a stump or something in there going into it, then the idea is that leads somewhere and then the city would be liable for potentially not providing an ADA accessible trail.
I do have a concern about, I agree with the idea of having sidewalk on both sides. It just makes sense whenever you're putting in a new development, that sidewalk is available for all residents on both sides of the street. I do have a, I don't know, reservations with lot number 20, how close it is to the lot line, the envelope to the setback line that's there, especially if you're allowing for one car in the driveway and including a sidewalk through there. I understand with noting that, you know, having 100-foot greenbelt area around the perimeter of the site, it's going to be pretty tough with just the geometry of the site, but I don't see how you're ever going to get a deck or, or anything in there that's going to be useful. So, I mean, more open space for lot 20 might be an option or just a rethinking of how that one's laid out. It just seems so tight in there, so.
Are you, you're talking about for the deck?
For the deck, yeah.
Well, these, these envelopes are drawn even a foot bigger than our largest plan.
Okay.
And then, like I said, your ordinance currently allows us to, or not me, but the, to go eight feet in.
Okay.
So right now, I mean, what I could do is restrict that lot to our smallest house, which is like five feet smaller than our bigger one. So that plus the eight feet would allow, so I mean, if we, we could do that, that's not a problem.
Yeah, just a recommendation. It just looks like it's tight whenever you allow for the additional parking, allow for a sidewalk if you're going to put it on that side, which we, which I would.
That side, that side already has a sidewalk.
Okay.
It's the, the one through nine that currently doesn't, that will.
I've had a day.
It's okay.
Additional comments?
Just wondering, looking at the, you know, the drawing sheet number one, the existing, if you look at the property that's to the north of it, it looks like, is there an issue of a problem with the driveway or the part you have with the existing house that's there?
Yeah, that encroaches on our, on our site.
I wondered, okay.
And it's actually something we're trying to, I mean, I don't want to tell the guy to, he's got to rip his driveway out. It's been there forever. It's not really interfering with our development. But the question I do have is when the city owned it, did that ever come up and, we couldn't find anything on it, but did that ever come up in conversation with an easement or anything with that gentleman?
Not that I'm cognizant of. I don't believe there's any private easement for that.
Okay. Again, it doesn't impede on our development, so I'm not going to make him rip it out, but...
I don't know when that was done.
Before surveyors.
We've got the property since 1415, so it would have been filmed without our awareness.
We're talking about 203 Monroe, right?
Correct.
I can take a look at the property file for that.
I mean, because whatever you need to do in terms of, when I look at the sidewalk to extend it.
Well, it jumps across the street on that point. So what, again, the reason why we, I shouldn't say again, but the reason why we didn't keep that going all the way down was because of the guy's driveway. So what I was thinking is where it crosses, we'll keep that, everything the way it is there, but then extend where that crossing is down in front of one through nine. So from, so from the cross point east, you'd have it on both sides. And then to make your way out to Monroe Street, we'd have it on the one side along the pond. Otherwise, yeah, I gotta take the guy's, part of the guy's driveway out.
Any additional questions?
I do have one other thing I wanted to ask you. I'm going to go take a look at it right when we're done here. I believe the view that one through nine have out to the park, I know there's a building over there somewhere, but I can't remember exactly where it sits. I think, because I believe in your ordinance, again, it talks about if you have, in this case, a single-family zoning that backs up to, I guess, what would the park be classified as?
It's zone, single-family. The daycare, I believe, that's directly south of the property is zone, professional business.
Okay. So I know there was a comment in there about us having to put screening between those lots one through nine and the park, but you said part of, it's already zoned?
I believe it's zone, single-family.
To the south, to the south, is that what?
Yeah.
I would need to check on that.
Because you got the park, the daycare and the single-family zoning. So if it is the same zoning, then the screening wouldn't be required?
The, well, the requirement is screening is required on adjoining boundaries between either conflicting non-residential or conflicting residential land use and residentially zoned or used property. So it's very general. Point being that there is some room for the commission to make a determination there as whether or not that's necessary. We're just calling it out that it's a decision that commissioners need to make.
Okay. That was, that was something that I wanted to make sure we discussed at the next meeting. I'm going to go physically look at it myself and see.
Physically up to lot six, it's asphalt that follows that whole thing.
Oh, gotcha.
Parking lot, but it's my angle to drive to the parking lot, but it's all asphalt. You may want to screen that just.
And then seven, eight, and nine are looking at the park?
Yes, or looking at Ballfield.
Ballfield. Okay. Oh, that's what I meant. Okay, that was all comments I had.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll move to open the public hearing at eight. Support?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
My property backs up to this development. I got some things, I'm really disappointed we couldn't see on the computer here what's going on. It could, maybe you can see there, but these were blanked out. So I don't, and right now something's on, but like, in the beginning, there was no map, no diagram or anything.
Yeah, well, I, I can see that one's on now. So those are the elevations. Did you want to see the site as well?
Yeah, the site, how, yeah, so.
It's going to be pretty small unfortunately on this.
Yeah. So I'm concerned about the part up the hill in the back towards the east. And there was some discussion about this 100-foot setback and stuff. I think that is a feature of, well, it used to be People's Park. So I would like to keep that east part similar to what it is, not back right up to the houses. And as far as making a path through this new development and cutting part of the hill, again, when I moved in, it was considered to be People's Park. My kids would, I have a gate to that area. My kids would go through there down to the basketball court. And on the hill, it was somewhat cleared in the back and we would sled down there. Little kids had a good, great time. So I think the hill is a feature. It has some nice trees on it. If you put a path, right now, there's no path to Monroe Street. When I would walk the dog, I'd go down to that old vacated road that used to go back there before they put the dirt in the way. So that's the only legal way I could get to People's Park. Now, I understand next to the daycare, there's a spot because there's a sign there, but maybe put a path there to connect to the back so people can walk. So I, I am concerned about how it butts the historic district. I was on it when it was formed and things looked pretty good then, but now it's questionable as to is there going to be any buffer between new houses and old houses? It's going to put our old houses kind of down in the dumps or something? I don't know. So I don't have any problem with the development overall, other than I'd like to see, it looks like on the east, it's open there. Up the hill is open and let's try to keep it that way. And make a path so we can walk, connect to the People's Park pathway, you know, where they have that coverage over the drain. Somehow make it connect to the sidewalk on Monroe Street. And again, if you could just get the computers to work a little bit better, at least in the old days when you had a flipboard, we could see it on paper. Now we see nothing. Here you see it, but not there. Okay, that's all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ted Drews, I live on Mark Hannah Court and I noticed the, what they've previously called the four backlots off of Mark Hannah Court, those are, apparently are going to stay green. And for use of getting to the park, like the gentleman was saying, in the previous builders' plans, there was a right-of-way put in for that, not only for to be able to walk to get to People's Park, because if we go out our back gate, we're on 207 Monroe Street land, so to speak. But that right-of-way still going to be put in?
It's not shown on the plan.
It's not showed on the print and there's utility right-of-way that needs to go back there and there was going to be public access right-of-way to go back there to be able to get to the park. Otherwise, they're like, just, I'll take the gate and get rid of it. Everybody's got a gate on that back part of that lot, so. That lot doesn't look like it's going to be used for anything, but I think a right-of-way, an easement, if you will, should be in order to, to continue the property lines and values up there. Otherwise, we don't have a way to get to People's Park. We can't even walk dogs down to there. So, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one other thing. It has nothing to do with this. You talked about signage, so maybe you know something. I've noticed stakes with green ribbons hanging on them. There's one in front of my house. Is that, there going to be signs put up?
There, it's probably a mistig, so it's a utility marker. It's not a sign. At least, at least to my knowledge, the city's not putting up signs, so if some private entity.
Have you seen those stakes with the green ribbons?
Usually it's an indicator of some sort of, either your neighbor had a survey done or a mistig or something like that. Are these large stakes that you're referring to?
They're tall.
Yeah, it might be something for a utility, maybe DPW is.
Is this on Henry Street?
Yeah.
They're probably for the, we're putting in our intranet.
Oh.
Potentially.
That's it, it's utility.
Kind of optics from the wastewater treatment plant that connects me into auto.
Correct.
So that might be what it is.
It is.
So it's in our right-of-way. With that, I will move to close the public hearing, seeing there are no other members of the audience today.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Comments, questions from planning commission members that were not? Comments, questions from planning commission members that were not answered already?
I mean, I'm willing to give my comments about these six items. The deck issue, I think that is that one lot that we talked about. I mean, we did this on the other developer that was Maple.
It was done on Belleterris, actually, as well. There's a provision for further extension into the setback.
So generally, then, if we allow that eight foot, then eight feet, then there would be a 27-foot...
Required setback for this, yes.
It's, it'd be an easy fix to make. It's, we just wanted to emphasize that it's something the developer should figure out and account for now, so it could be included in the PUD.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, my suggestion with the sidewalk, I think about the sidewalks, we all kind of agree that that should happen.
Can you flip to the last slide?
Oh, yeah, I apologize.
Yeah, do those six, I'm just going to mention them. The connection to People's Park, again, my suggestion on that one is maybe deferred language in there should something happen, or should the HOA request it if the city is willing to do something like that, but at this point, creating it, it's one of those things that we talked about in other develops, including even the last layer farms. There was something similar to that, that I think we did in Curtis Bluffs also that connects to...
That does have a pathway to Curtis Park.
So however, we might want to make it identified for something in the future, but it would be the responsibility of the HOA to pay for it or whatever. And then, you mentioned there will be parking on the street, so yeah, I believe we should have parking on the street, at least on one side, considering it's going to be private road. I'm fine with whatever adjustment we need to not have to have 100-foot setback all around it. I mean, this is typical neighborhood. There's neighbors in ours, there's locations in our city that have closer setbacks than that. And then the last one, the vegetation, only for me, is I'm thinking because of the fact that it's an asphalt parking lot, I don't know which is going to be more beneficial to have something in there, or in some cases, doesn't make it a better transition. I would look at what we did at Curtis Bluffs, because we did something there, or maybe some of the other examples that we've done in town. That's my two cents.
So to clarify, Dean, on number four, would have the applicant provide the access?
We put a recommendation in the HP, in the agreement or whatever we've done to defer it until a time such as...
We have a lot of authority with the property because we are the owners telling to him. So in addition, we have a development agreement likely, if I'm not mistaken, which that could absolutely be an added condition of that.
I think that's pretty important for the neighbors.
Right, so should they choose to have the path, it can be assessed to the HOA at a later date, essentially?
Okay, there's two different, yeah, there's two different things there. I would say the one is this pedestrian connection, but the other one is to allow them a right-of-way across. I don't know, we're going to put in a path and everything for them, but...
Oh, you're talking about a right-of-way from the neighbors on, I guess there's multiple issues at public.
Yeah, I would suggest looking back at Faradine's property and see what we're doing. I can't remember. I mean, really, the issue is we gave up the property. There were concerns about being able to get access to People's Park. It's, again, it's like putting in a pathway, and it's like, it wouldn't be our responsibility. It would have to be the HOA or the developer to do that, but then where does that lead to?
Okay, I just, I can be clear. We're talking about the people of Bison Ridge or...
Mark Hannah Court.
Mark Hannah Court. Okay, so we're talking about the...
To be all those that back to those four lots, there was an issue with that.
Right.
Go back, look at what Faradine and make a recommendation, but I'm concerned with who's going to maintain it, what's it entail and all that, to make sure that it's, you know, meets whatever requirements we have.
And our, just so I'm not banging my head against the wall if I don't find anything, are we positive that the Faradine project proposed a pathway for those people?
I don't know if there was something in there. I do remember something about access.
I think a later iteration had some kind of pedestrian access easement across those four lots.
Okay.
I'm not sure what it connected to, though. I don't know if it made it all the way to the trail that exists.
No, I think what it would have gone is you would have gone back, I mean, actually, in front of all these houses is a trail that connects off of Mark Hannah Court, too, but in the back of these properties, it would lead into the city's property, would not lead into...
The subdivision, the person's yard.
But yeah, you would not necessarily have to come back across here and going in with your, you would go into...
Absolutely.
But I can't remember exactly what the drawing showed.
Any additional questions or comments?
Any other comment? As I mentioned, I would like to see the name changed, and it'd be something reflective in members of either the Historic Society or the Historic District Commission could make a recommendation.
Absolutely. Do you have a, I can follow up with you after this for contacts, so I can put you in touch with developer.
If we are postponing, when would be the date certain that you think would be adequate?
So I would recommend May 24th, simply because if we did May 10th, I wouldn't absolutely need it by Monday, and all of his updates, and then hope that OHM and Schraerak could provide me. And from a council perspective, the day that council sees it will not change if it's May 10th versus May 24th because of how the meetings for council lie in May. So I'd recommend May 24th. It does not further delay Mr. Barry or Livonia Builders.
Thank you.
I'll move to postpone to...
May 24th. Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any additional discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes to a date certain of 5/24/2023. Any discussion items tonight? Would anybody like to make a motion to excuse the absence of half of the board tonight? Marle Beardsley, Heft, and Trica?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:33 PM?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all for bearing with us.
Thank you.